Amazing.
Over there? All right. Let's get the show going. All right, welcome everyone to the special city council meeting for October ninth, twenty twenty four. Maria, what'd you call the role?
Fritz.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
McLaughlin.
Here.
Manessa.
Here. It's not on our agenda per se to approve the agenda, but it's routinely done. And I guess that uh I should ask this question because I understand that Karen has scheduling problems with getting another meeting going. So is council interested in adding discussion possible selection to the agenda for tonight? Which would come after the interviews before adjournment?
Right, I just, I just wanna comment on that. I uh, that was my understanding is that we would do that. And my understanding from the city manager was that tonight was the only time this week that all of us were available to meet. And next week I'm out of town. And so uh I assumed that we were going to do that. We were going to deliberate just as we did two years ago. So um, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda.
I just want to say, so I just like to say one thing is that I really hate making a decision at the same time we do things, the same thing that we do a work session and then voting on at the same time. I was dead against it ever since I've been on council, I've always made a point because we used to do that a lot. And I complained the whole time because I'd like to sit back and think about what I'm doing. And plus it doesn't give the people the idea that we already have a preconceived notion of what we're gonna do.
We don't, but the alternative is that I have to leave because I won't be able to participate in the decision making. So either you get more time or I get to dis- be a part of the decision making. So I think that's what's up for all of us to consider.
I understand that you can't make it, but the thing is, like I said, was I just don't like doing that. Because it does, it gives us the impression, people out there seeing us.
Nor do I.
Making the same decision that we've already had a preconceived notion of what we're gonna come up to it.
I don't think anybody thinks that, but I think we did do this two years ago and you didn't have a problem with then. I'm just, you know, as I said, I think the alternative is uh the three of you interview the candidates, because if you're gonna make that decision at a date yet to be determined between now and next Friday, I'm unable to attend.
Well. We'll make the motion.
I did, I started to, but I got interrupted.
Oh, she did make the motion to amend and then it turned into conversation, but.
Okay.
It would need a second. And since it's been moved and seconded, I guess I would also like to comment that I think making the deliberation decision the same night as the interviews is a poor practice. I think it's better to take the time, consider when we were doing this for council, I re- I rewatched every interview and rewrite everything in the days in between. So I could be as informed as possible, and I think that's plus you get an answer to the citizens to contact you with their thoughts. So I think that waiting is a much better way to do it.
Well, that's uh, well, I would offer up the fact that we waited and we still have an, we have an unfilled seat here. A few years ago, we made a decision after making the, doing the interviews and not only was Kurt Knoth appointed and took that seat, he was later elected to fulfill the rest of that term uh last November. So I believe the outcomes were pretty good going forward. So I realize that that's your opinion, that it's better to wait. I, right now, I don't think that's an option for us, unless again, you would like me not to participate in this process. And if that's your wish.
Well, obviously.
I'd like that done.
Obviously, nobody has wished that you not participate, nobody has expressed that.
Nobody.
What we're talking about is.
Sounds like it.
No.
No, it doesn't.
We didn't invite it.
No one has said that at all.
Well, then why are we even having this discussion?
Don't put words in my mouth, and you don't do that.
Why are we having this discussion?
All I said was I don't approve of it myself personally, I did say I would have been okayed. All I said was I just don't approve of it.
I think what we're, I think what we're discussing is what we perceive as the best process.
I don't think that's, what's on the table is my motion, that's what we're discussing.
And that's why we're discussing it. Because if we approve the motion or disapprove the motion.
So you think it's a better practice to do it with three people?
Can we just vote and see what happens? Well, I think that it's a better practice to to do deliberation. What I don't wanna get into is a point where we can't meet and have a court. And um, because I think we owe it to the BLP, to the public to have a proper deliberation of candidates.
I think the candidates deserved to have each of us present in that deliberation.
Absolutely.
If you agree with that, then, then why, why are we even discussing this?
That's what we're elected to do. But I will say that.
Indeed, it's our duty and responsibility.
In my thirteen years of service on this council, I have often made awkward choices on my personal schedule in order to be it.
And if you're suggesting right now, Mr. Mayor, that I have not made uh extraordinary accommodations to make all of our meetings or four meetings last month, you're suggesting that right now, I'd, I'd ask you to back down.
Well, I'm not, I'm just telling you about, this has been.
What do you say, why are you bringing that up right now?
Because.
Because I have a conflict?
Because we are trying to figure out how to do this, so.
No, I think that it's pretty straightforward here. It's I've made the motion. It's been seconded.
Okay, any more discussion on this motion? Okay, would you please call the role to amend the, the agenda?
Lo.
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
No.
Manessa.
Yes, okay. So we will add discussion and potential, potential selection between items four and five. Which brings us to a call to the audience. Who would like to address council? I won't read my entire script because I don't have it in front of me, but y'all know the rules. Three minutes, tell us who you are.
You're gonna sit down?
Wait a minute, you can stand. You want me to stand?
Yeah.
All right.
But you gotta talk to the mic.
Can you still hear me?
I'll go ahead and sit down.
Sit down.
All right.
My name is Jeffrey Miller and I live at eleven twenty South Harbor Drive. I'm here tonight not to advocate for any one of our candidates you've interviewed. However, I want to explain some of the board's recent actions and many times inactions. When the board realized they needed to hire new general manager, it took nine months for them to do so. And the search have resulted in an interim candidate selection. That candidate, while acting as interim GM and despite city legal's advice not to fire the whistleblower, went ahead and did so anyway, with the board not interceding or overturning that action. When the board finally held a public meeting regarding the new GM hiring, they did not afford a call to the audience until the last candidate was interviewed, which was four hours after the process started. And that process started in the middle of the work, work week. I appreciate you for allowing the citizens of Grand Haven to speak before you commence your selection process tonight. Once the board chose their new GM, the board did not do their due diligence and see what the GMs of similar size, MPPA, member institutions make so as to come up with a fair and competitive salary. No. Instead, the salary of the new BLP general manager is over two hundred and seven thousand dollars. And this is for an organization that's forty-five employed, less than forty-five employees, and one that no longer generates any power. To increase citizen attendance and rate payer participation, which would be great for the BLP, I've asked for the past several years that the BLP board meetings be held at a time and place that would be more convenient than the six P M start at the facility. This is during the dinner hour. Regrettably, this request has always fallen on deaf ears. While B A of the management talks to their major industrial customers, I've implored the board to have management talk to all of its customers, reach out to the faith-based organizations, see what environmental groups are interested in, like the Grand Haven High School Green Team or the West Michigan Environmental Action Council. Seek input from small businesses and find out what their concerns are. And what about the NGOs and various government agencies? No dice, no interest. To be honest, I feel like the child in one of the W C Fields' famous quotes, "Go away, little boy, you bother me." The BLP board and management don't show any interest in reaching out to the public. They're ultimate bosses and hear what is on their mind. The BLP will continue to operate and behave just like a for-profit utility until there is positive change at the top. Your selection tonight could be the first step in making the BLP more accountable, accessible, and transparent, and to be an organization that everyone in Grand Haven and the surrounding areas can be proud of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else would like to address council?
No, I only wanted you.
The other half of our audience? All right. Well, seeing no more than we will close, and this is the only call to the audience this evening on Origin. So you won't have another opportunity to address us unless you corner us on the way out. So we'll close the call to the audience, move on to our Board of Light and Power candidate interviews. First up will be Ryan Cotton. We will have, when Ryan gets here, we will present the ground rules so he understands.
Hard to get here.
Is it, uh, Maria? Is there a reason to close the door?
Shut it one side.
All right. Because this is an open meeting, I don't want people to think they can't come in.
That's why I'm shutting one side, because you also don't want interview candidates to come in.
Okay, that's true, but we, we would have to ask them individually not to listen in. Once, if they've already interviewed, they can stay.
Okay, it's like that.
Okay. We're on a roll. First up is Mr. Ryan Cotton for interview. Welcome, we'd like to thank you, I'll read the spiel here, so bear with me. We'd like to welcome you to take for taking the time to talk to us today and interview for the open member seat on the Board of Light and Power. I'd like to give you an outline of what's going to happen today. It's a panel interview. Each candidate is gonna be asked the same set of questions by city council. And will be provided three to five minutes to respond to each question. There will be limited follow-up questions, so we may make, so we maintain the integrity of the interview process for all being interviewed. You'll be provided an opportunity in the last question to provide any additional information you feel will help us to make our decision. Any questions on that? So.
No.
Everybody gets the same questions in the same order and uh, welcome. That being said, last time we did this, I started and we went that way. This time I'm going to let Karen go first and we'll go around this one. So, Karen, would you like to read the first question?
Oh, I thought you were gonna.
I'll let you have the first question.
Questions on me, okay.
I'll, I'll give you up.
Welcome, Ryan. Uh, please share with us a brief summary of your background and experience, making sure to highlight for city council any education, qualification, or other boards, commissions, and committee experience that you believe makes you uniquely qualified for the open seat on the Board of Light and Power.
Thank you, glad to do so. Uh, we've lived in Grand Haven twenty-nine years, I've been married forty-four years to Karen. Uh, we have three children, um, all grown, graduated from Grand Haven High School. And uh, we live near Lake Shore Middle School. I have Michigan roots, was born in Trevor City, lived in Hastings, then they made a mistake and moved to Ohio. Uh, and I wanted to always return. So uh, this was advertised, uh, the Grand Haven City Manager position in nineteen ninety-five. It was something that I really uh, wanted to, to apply for. Um, I've always had public service values, I was raised as a Quaker. And that means uh, we didn't believe in uh consensus building, listening, uh, trying to find solutions to hard problems uh through dialogue and, and, and following the goal and rule. We exercise, or I like to exercise empathy, uh, and I seek to understand and, and listen first. Uh, I was initially an environmental science major uh, and pursued that until I took political science class and, and enjoyed that so much that my career became one of uh, my grades in public administration, eventually a master's, public administration, I just got a master's in earth science. Um, with that, I did some teaching and enjoyed that as an adjunct at Van Valley and Hope College. Uh, did that for um, I think it was over twenty-one years, uh, part-time, of course. And enjoyed all the students I got to hopefully inspire and, and help learn more about everything from environmental theory to state local government, environmental policy. I've served on a number of boards in my, my career as a village manager of Spring Lake, as well as city manager of Holland, of Grand Haven, and then ultimately retired from the city of Holland as city manager. Uh, these boards were the water sewer authority in this area, the sewer authority in, in Holland. Um, I also served on the Holland Board of Public Works. I served in an ex officio capacity as city manager, myself and my member of council served in ex officio. But we were there during some very exciting times where we decommissioned the coal plant and we also uh, worked on building the gas plant, uh, which has been successful. And uh, thirdly, we also adopted a community energy plan. And so if you know that that's one of my interests now, we'll probably hear more about that. And, and uh, it's always been a lifelong interest, as I mentioned, as, as an environmental science major. And it's been fun to be able to combine my career with that effort. Uh, lastly, um, I'm partly retired now, I do executive search. Um, relationship building is important in, in this business. When uh, someone I knew forty years ago, uh, heard I'd retired from Holland, they asked me to assist in their um, agency, it was called W H R USA, is now merged with M G T, which does the same thing with school districts, so we're bigger and better. Um, and uh, recently I chose to um, I used to do studies as well as facilitation, as well as uh, some others and grant writing, and I chose to, to reduce my workload and so produce this time where I can serve the Board of Light and Power and also the city of Grand Haven uh, further. So this is a very exciting time to be in the energy uh world and participate and I look forward to the opportunity to uh serving the interests of the citizens if you choose to have me do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Glad to see stepping forward in that, so. My question is, what are some of the most important lessons that you've learned from your prior experiences on boards and teams and committees and et cetera?
Uh, there's a reason why government moves slow. It needs to be deliberate, needs to uh, and, and make sure that the, the charter, the policies and procedures uh, and all voices uh, are heard or at least asked to be heard. So obviously, that's, that's one thing that's very important. In the role of the BLP, as you know, uh, your greatest duty is to make sure that your one employee that you hire is, uh, has the support that they need and also has the tools that they need and also has the opportunity to learn and grow that they need. So uh, in, in my capacity and boards, as I think about uh, the role that would serve if you appoint me, uh, that would be one of the highest priorities that I would want to make sure that the, that the people that I'm responsible for, um, the general manager, uh, would have all of those tools and ability to, to be as successful as possible. Uh, of course, in turn, it's staff's uh, job to help the board be successful. And that's what governance is about, understanding your corals, you know, staying in your lane, but also being able to communicate and dialogue in a way that is calm and involves um, building something better than, than what it was that you inherited. So ultimately, you can have win-win uh, solutions. That's not always possible, obviously, uh, as a manager, I need to make some tough decisions involving dismissals and all kinds of policies. Uh, but in terms of what I've learned in boards and commissions, it's, it's the focus on um, listening, making sure people have the tools they, they need to know, they have to do the job well, and to then um uh, be deliberate in how you proceed forward. Um, if you not believe in the status quo, I, I think, I think if you have status quo, you're actually slipping backwards. So I, I do believe that boards uh, should have a, a, a slow but positive movement forward. Um, it's somewhat like the, the tortoise um, approach.
Thank you. What do you see as the most pressing issues facing the energy and public utilities industries today? Uh, and please explain why.
Uh, in terms of all utilities, uh, the, the mix of energy is the most pressing thing to figure out. Uh, obviously, the state of Michigan has uh, renewable energy goals of, I think it's hundred percent uh, by twenty fifty, and I think we're supposed to be a fifty percent by twenty thirty. They come off a little bit, um, we can look that up, right? But it's, it's, they're aggressive. So to get there and to be in compliance is certainly a responsibility of every utility and especially municipal utility. So that's, that's something to understand. There are, there are issues associated with that. One of which involves the utility directly in that transmission and distribution. Uh, should, should we electrify everything tomorrow? Which of course is something that would be environmentally phenomenal, you know, in terms of carbon reduction. Um, it's not physically possible, given the grid that we all have right now. So there, there's a challenge to rise to that level, uh, and it's, as a society, it's not up to just one utility. In terms of the L P, I know they have some space needs and the, the uh, infrastructure, the facility where they're at uh, and, and needs some additional renovation. I think they have a sun their agenda recently for a study, uh, some architecture work. And, and I recognize that also there's the Harbor Island unknowns that are still being uh, studied and, and worked through. So those are just a few uh, that jumped to mind. Uh, I, I think it's great the way uh, that BLP has sent a crew to Florida to assist in the hurricane. And I also think it's great that, that they uh, celebrate being a public utility uh, this month.
Thank you. Well, this, this question is similar to the last, but it's a little more specific to Board of Light and Power. What do you see are the challenges facing Grand Haven's Board of Light and Power? How will your appointment make a positive contribution to addressing any of those challenges?
Thank you, I, I touched on some of them, I touched on the engineering side. Um, and, and by the way, I'm comfortable with engineering and technology and all the technical aspects of the role that it might entail, uh, both because of my Holland experience, but also uh, my first job in city government was at the wastewater treatment plant and uh, we're in Ohio, we're in Ohio, and I enjoyed that so much that part-time, in addition to going to school, I, I took I studied and took the class in English wastewater treatment plant operator. So I, I understand the role that utilities play from the bottom up and the technology uh, associated therewith. In, in relation to um, the focus of your question, I remind you again, was about issues for the Board of Light and Power.
And challenges facing Board of Light and Power and how you will make a positive contribution to addressing them.
So I mentioned some of the technical things. In terms of governance is where I think I can have the next greatest impact, understanding, listening, but then governance. Uh, I, I think, I think it's important that every public agency have a, a, a persona that's, that's positive, a positive brand, uh, that they are representing the interests of the constituents that they serve. Uh, I am, the communication is my mantra and now um, and always is getting back to people, listening to people and trying to make sure that I'm hearing uh, what needs to be heard and sharing what needs to be shared and working together as much as possible as a team. There's gonna be differences, yet uh, the way to approach resolving differences is through dialogue and additional research and or uh, sometimes finding a new solution that no, great start that I hadn't thought of before. So that's a, a large contribution that I can provide, that I think is really needed at this time. I understand that great things have happened in the last four or five months and I wanna make sure that we build on those great things going forward.
Thank you.
Ryan, in closing, please share with us why you believe you are the, the very best candidate to fill the BLP trustee seat.
Well, uh, that's up for you to decide, but I, I do know uh, two of the other three candidates and I think very highly of them. Uh, Andy Coffin I've known for years and his public service is, is just incredible. Um, he also has a sense of humor that I uh, envy a great deal. He's uh, you know, he's, he's really good with uh, making people feel comfortable. So I think he has a, a lot to offer. Uh, Jim Hagan uh, is, has been, attended all of our Community Energy Plan meetings. I think you know that that's something that's been instrumental since you set up the Sustainable Energy Commission and I, um, I am the um, Assistant Chair of the Spirit Committee that has come out of that and will eventually bring a plan to you. Jim has come to many of our meetings and contributed, they've been really solid contributions. And, and I think he um, also um, he, he grows these dawn redwood trees, look away if I don't know if, if he, if he has any this year, they're really great. So I wanna say good things about the other candidates, I think you have a lot of good choices. I think that I am unique and that I have depth and breadth that um that stands a lot of different roles in local government. Uh, I served uh, and, and worked with two public utilities, served on the board at one uh, public utility, uh, electric utility. Um, I did recruitment for the, for Collins Colorado Board of Light and Power. Uh, so I, I think I have a perspective and, and a broad knowledge uh, in addition to the things I've said about uh, the way that I um, operate in a public setting uh, that I could contribute a great deal for you.
Thank you.
Well. Do you have any uh, questions for us?
Well, the largest, the biggest question is, is what you would like to see from the representative of the city of Van Haven on the Board of Light and Power. I, I, I say that uh, is, this is something that they did not really ever think I would aspire to. Um, but when I saw that Andrea was leaving and I recognized that she had a voice that um ideally should be filled by a woman, right? But uh, I, I told everyone that if a woman applied, I would withdraw. But I, I, there are some things I liked that Andrea brought to the board and I'd be happy to continue with that. But I'd like to know what you would, would like to see, what's on your minds, what's on your constituents' minds uh, as you think about making this appointment.
I, for one, would like to see uh an openness more, you know, and uh seeing them move forward into, into the energy part, you know, getting the green part, I like to see that more soft and myself, like to see a candidate, like to see them being uh, working together and moving forward, moving the BLP forward more and not be so divisive amongst each other, they wanna see them work together, that's what I'd like to see.
Would anyone else like to address them?
Sure, I'd, I'd be up. Uh, um, I, I agree with you on uh, I think it, what I would like to see is um uh, someone in that role that can complement our current um uh, group of trustees, uh, bringing uh, some diversity of education and experience. Um, I believe that diversity, diversity of thought brings us uh, better decisions. So I really do believe, believe in that, so that's one of the things that I'm looking for. Um, and uh, also just someone that is able to uh discuss uh collaborate, uh, communicate, um, conduct themselves civilly and respectfully and be able to exchange, you know, help model some of the kind of behavior all elected officials. Those two come to mind?
Thank you. Okay, I guess my comment would be, good thoughts, my, both my council, to all council members, I'm looking for someone who knows at least enough about utility to understand what's being presented to them and you know, from either technical or business side, and also a forward-looking attitude to where the utility is going to go in the next predictable future with new technologies as they come online. So I guess my focus would be on being able to step into the role of a basically a managing member of the governing board of a utility. So that's kinda where I would be at.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm looking for a good partner. Um, you know, it's been, you know, under and I'm only talking for myself, some of the relationship has been rather contentious. Uh, rather tough to deal with. And um, you know, I'm looking for someone that's going to represent the citizens of this city, best when it comes to Harbor Island. Um, there is, there's still a There is, there's still a contentious, you know, relationship on, on some issues and I'm looking for somebody to move that over the top. I think that's important to the city. There's a lot of money that's at stake here and I just want to make sure that, that we all share the responsibility.
Do you have any other questions for us?
That was the second question was Harbor Island. I don't think there's a conclusion. Their study is still underway. I know there's been some charrette or something like that. I attended one. Yet, is there a timeline that, and, and does the BLP, as Councilmember McLaughlin said, have a, a role in what you've learned so far?
I know there's a published timeline from HDRs laying out various steps in their process. We are not to the point of having the ACO yet, so we don't have a dictated timeline from the beginning. But I don't know which half of that question was your, was your question? But there's nothing, there's nothing that's been told to us what we must do at a particular timeline. We do have a timeline for analysis and for eventual decision-making.
So if I agreed into that going forward, there's still ample opportunity for discussion between the parties?
Very much so, yes.
Based on the data that's collected and conclusions that are reached. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. This was all the questions that we had. Appreciate your, your willingness to step up and participate in the interview process. And we will be, after interviews are complete, we'll have some deliberation and we'll see if we can make a selection at that point.
Sounds good. I know when I do interviews, I ask candidates to not be present for the subsequent interviews. So there's no objection, that's what I'll, I'll.
Okay. Yeah, I guess from our point of view, we don't want candidates to be here listening to other interviews before they have theirs. But after you've spoken, I don't think that matters if you listen to others, that's entirely up to you.
Oh, okay.
But you're, but you've said what you had to say, so I don't think listening to other interviews has a whole lot of impact.
Right. Well, just let me know.
Or you can go next door and participate in fire prevention. Well, that's, that's probably more fun than this.
Yeah. I, I will probably take leave, but if you need me back tonight, can someone text me back or I don't know what the next step is, but I'd be happy to make myself available when you need me.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next one is in 12 minutes.
He has arrived.
He's. You want to bring him in sooner? Was it, is there any objection to starting the next interview right away?
Not at all.
If he's, if he wants to start early, we'll take him. We've got more time for bounce house.
At least a pizza break.
Or pizza.
How you doing?
Good. Welcome. When you were Phil, are you?
Yes, sir.
Have I spelled, have I pronounced your name correctly?
You did actually, you did really well. It's only six letters, right?
Well, Phil is pretty easy. Welcome. I've got a brief, feel agreed here, then we'll start. Thank you for coming. Thank you for stepping up and being willing to serve and to be interviewed and to go through this process. I'd like to give you an outline of what's going to happen today. This is a panel interview. Each candidate is going to be asked the same set of questions by city council, will be provided three to five minutes to respond to each question. There will be limited follow-up questions, so we maintain the integrity of the interview process for all being interviewed. You'll be provided an opportunity at the last question to provide any additional information you feel will help us make our decision. So we'll kind of go around the table here and ask pre-written questions and you can take your time and respond.
Okay.
We'll start with Karen on question number one.
Welcome again. Please share with us a brief summary of your background and experience, making sure to highlight for state council, any education qualifications or other boards, commissions or committee experience that you believe makes you uniquely qualified for that open seat on the Board of Light and Power?
Hopefully you all received my, my resume. I've been in the power business since nineteen seventies. I started out in the United States military. I'm a Navy veteran, 10 years in the United States, submarine force, six years on the boats, two years in school and two years teaching. After that, I went to Consumers Energy and then Consumers Power and was hired as a shift supervisor at the camp, at the Midland Power Plant, working on some projects there. I was in charge of what they call their test cases, surveillance as they're called for, for nuclear power. So to make sure that all the systems do what the systems have to do in order to protect the public and protect all the systems. As I was working there, they said 18 months to complete the project and they were working, you know, only a shift and a half. My experience is if you're going to work to complete something in a short period of time, you're going to be working, you know, 24 hours a day and that's not enough, you're going to work nights. So I started looking for other opportunities and that's when I came to Grand Haven for the first time in 1984. I worked at the JH Campbell plant initially as a shift supervisor, later as a training supervisor and eventually as the operating superintendent. As the operating superintendent, I was in charge of the overall operation of the facility, handling any grievances, as well as the design improvement on the plant. So anything that improved the facilities, those were the Campbell one and two plants, was my decision, my signature and eventually my acceptance. Then I was given an opportunity to work at, for CMS Enterprises. CMS Enterprises, non-utility portion of Consumers Power, now CMS Energy. What CMS Enterprises did was they were non-utility, which meant that they actually had to sell their power in order to make a profit. It wasn't the way utilities run where a utility gets stipend. For example, they get a return on investment for all the capital investments they make. The other within, to, as far as an IPP or independent power producer, it's driven by a board. I was on the boards of five different companies eventually. And we have to be able to participate, which means buy fuel, be able to sell the power in different markets and participate in board meetings. Eventually, I was at, in charge of CMS Enterprises, which is the holding company for all the assets that are non-utility, which we, we ran across the United States from California to Maine, fossil plants, hydro plants, plants that burn almost anything from whole tires to literally ag waste, chicken poo and wastewater. So each one of those were co-owned with the utility and Consumers Energy and different entities across, across the United States. So we had to be able to serve both them and us, protect the assets, protect the facilities and protect the investment. I think that's kind of it in general. I could go on and on, but there's a lot. I had one for you and you got my resume.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. What are some of the most important lessons that you've learned from your prior experience on boards, teams, committees, et cetera?
Well, I think the first thing you need to do is kind of put yourself in the other person's shoes and realize what they're looking for and how you can achieve consensus. A lot of the boards are partners, are private corporations, individual companies, and entrepreneurs in a lot of ways. So they're looking for a return on their investment, but what they hire us for is the expertise. So what we were challenged in doing, and what I was challenged in doing at board and what I learned was to be able to give them what they need as well as keeping the integrity of the power plant and the integrity of my company. I was once given a, one of our first plants that what I operated on was called TDS Fiber City up in Manistee, Michigan. That was the, that was kind of the stalking horse for the nuclear plant in Midland when they converted to gas turbines. They needed to get the Public Search Commission to approve it as an IPP. So we actually floated the smaller Tondu Energy Plant up in Manistee, which co-burned coal, wastewater from the paper mill and supplied steam to the paper mill as well as electricity to Consumers Energy. So you had to make sure that you could return their money on investment. They were primarily the stalking horse for developing the idea. We provided the expertise in being able to construct the plant and operate the plant. So knowing that their, their idea was to, you know, make the most money, they actually offered, offered me one time to, you know, they said, well, Phil, what I need you to do is you need to be on, on my side. And I told Joe, I said, I am on your side. I would do things no differently on this side of the fence as I would on your side of the fence. It's the safety, integrity of the plant and to be able to do it and operate it profitably for all parties concerned. So I think the big thing is to achieve consensus. Some boards were more aggressive than others. Some were interested in just selling assets. You just had to kind of determine what they, what they needed to do and also what was best for my company.
Thank you.
Phil, what do you see as the most pressing issues facing the energy and public utilities industry today? And can you please explain why?
Sure. Actually, I've got a list on me. But first thing I see happening right now is we're losing a lot of base load generation. And we're losing base load generation, it's going to cause a lot of problems. First thing that, notice the Campbell plant is going to be out of service here by the end of 2025. Campbell plant, as well as the Sims plant, as well as the Cobb plant, as well as the plants on the east side of the state, all provided not only electrical generation, real power, okay, megawatts, but they also provide apparent power, what we call bars, okay? Bars is what allows other equipment to operate. It controls the voltage. By boosting the bars in the system, you're actually raising the voltage so that when a motor's running, for example, the way a motor operates is it has to receive current first, the current causes the field, the field causes the motor to run. So that power is actually wasted and it's not providing any work. The problem with that is that as the power plants are taken offline, they no longer provide that voltage or bars, excuse me, bar support. So what's going to happen is what happened in the, remember when the power grid was fell apart on the eastern seaboard, probably 2000, two, 2003, right around there? The reason that happened was that generators fell off the line and the generators were now too far away from the load. So the load just continued to drop. And although there were a lot of safeguards in the system, everyone was kind of playing poker with each other. There were safeguards that would allow everything to trip off as the frequency dropped indicating the load was excessive, but everybody said, no, no, it's been defeated, I'm going to hold. Somebody else will pick up the load, somebody else will pick up the voltage. When nobody picked it up, the system collapsed. So that's what's going to, you know, that, we're going to experience, I feel, brownouts and blackouts in the future, just because we're seeing that lack of voltage support. Okay, along with the, the voltage support, you're looking at solar and wind as substitutes. Solar's nice, you know, eight acres to produce one, one megawatt. And again, that megawatt has to go from DC to AC, so you're losing efficiency. You can put wind plants in, wind plants, 3,500 acres to produce 50 megawatts. You know, almost a little bit more than half what the Sims plant could produce on 3,500 acres above the size of the city of Grand Haven, not including all the townships. And the other thing about solar and, and, and wind is that it's convenient power. When the wind blows, we can generate some wind. When the sun shines, we can generate some solar. The problem with it right now is it's never really been tested. Right now, supplemented, supplemented energy is also being subsidized. So a lot of times when the sun is shining and the wind is blowing and everything is good, all this power is being generated from other means, green means, they're actually displacing more efficient power on the line. Because we're not only paying for the megawatts or kilowatt hours, we're actually paying for the subsidies as well. So that's what I see as the, the problem coming. You need to be able to prevent or at least minimize the blackouts and brownouts to the utility or in our case to Grand Haven Board of Power and Light by looking at other opportunities and providing other products that would interest myself, the mid, Midwest, you know, independent power, independent system operator, to make you not want to take Grand Haven offline.
Thank you. So what do you see are the challenges facing Grand Haven's Board of Light and Power? And how would your appointment make a positive contribution to addressing any of those challenges?
The first thing I think is my experience is pretty diverse, if you look at my resume. I would, you know, look at opportunities to be able to keep Grand Haven current as well as different ways to go ahead and achieve power stabilization in our area. For example, right now you're using, I think Franklin Energy to go ahead and they're providing some consultation services or did. And primarily what they did from what I can read is they looked at being able to, what I call grab the low hanging fruit. So what they did is they went to a lot of the factories and businesses you have around here and said, you know, let's eliminate the regular lighting, the incandescent bulbs, fluorescent bulbs and go with LEDs. Great idea, it's going to eliminate some load, but it's a minimal amount of load. Looking experience-wise, the next, the next higher fruit that we need to look at is possibly, and again, I don't know all the businesses in Grand Haven and what their product is, but learning their product and seeing if they can't even shift some of their production to the back shifts, especially if they're using a lot of motors and, and items that consume a lot of real and unreal power. The other thing is to shop customers. When we're looking at new opportunities in the city of Grand Haven to provide additional manufacturing capability, shop who you're looking for. Shop somebody that's going to give resistant power, somebody that has a lot of furnaces or, or other type of real power uses. So you're not going to slip and, and continue to get a loss of bars or a low voltage in our area. The other thing I would look at is looking at sowing up long-term power commitments to the city at, at a given cost. The sooner we do that, the better off we would be because the cost of power and the cost of energy and the cost of fuel is all going up. If you can get into an IPP as a partner, possibly even using beauty bonds as a way to, you know, kind of put into a little chip into the capital investment. You know, and also looking at generation, for example, peaker generation, not necessarily in the city of Grand Haven, but someplace that makes sense, both from the ability to bring fuel in, for example, natural gas, so you'd be near a distribution line, as well as being through, next to a, a electrical distribution system where you can tie that megawatts in. Because the idea is, is that you can bid those into the system and use that as a hedge for the power price in the city of Grand Haven. You can also pair yourself with a independent generation organization that would go ahead and do the marketing for you and develop hedges for you naturally, so that you're looking at power even maybe more than you need, so you can sell it during peak hours. So look for other opportunities and investment to provide some additional revenue, which again, could support your system. I would even look at the possibility of providing bar, bar support or voltage support in our area, relatively inexpensive, putting in some capacitors or some var reactors, again, to go ahead and bring this in to help hold the voltage up. So if myself was looking at an area and looking to get brownouts, they say, no, I can't do Grand Haven because they're providing all this voltage support. They're providing what Campbell no longer provides, what Cobb no longer provides.
Thank you.
In closing, please share with us what you believe, why you believe you are the best candidate to fill the BLP trustee seat.
I think that the best candidate choice is yours, not mine. I wouldn't be here if I didn't think I could contribute. I contribute in other ways to the area right now. For example, I'm a member of the American Legion. I participate in the Honor Guard. I'm, just go over this real briefly. I am involved in the community. I'm the membership chair for the, for the American Legion. I've been a tour guide at the Silver Sands for over 10 years. So I think I bring some unique properties or unique skills to the city of Grand Haven as far as the Board of Light and Power goes in it. A lot of things that people talk about, I've done. I've managed from a base level, for example, in the Campbell Plant. When I went there and took over as the operation superintendent, there were 60 grievances in a year, which are disparities or disagreements between the union and management. Instead of looking at ways to try to, you know, say, "Well, that's just not true. That's not true. I'm not believing you. I'm ruling this grant of grievance," I actually formed a committee with union representatives and we looked to adapt our contract, which is a lineman contract, to the contract that we need for operators. The next year, we had two grievances. And it wasn't me. It was, again, consensus group working with, you know, the committee men or the union stewards, if you will. I've worked in, you know, achieved different, being able to trade in power. When MISO first began and we, we were able to sell our energy in spite of, you know, at the time, over low gas prices and moving into higher gas prices, you had to watch where you were hedging to make sure that you had fuel at the right cost at the right time. Kind of a lot like I'm sure the Sims Plant did with their coal supplies and buying coal seasonably and being able to pass the savings on to the consumer. So those are all skills that I've worked with, skills that I have. I think I'm relatively easy to work with. You can be the judge of what, you know, what you think. And certainly, you're welcome to speak to anybody I've worked with. I think one thing I've got, you know, the disadvantage I have with the people is that I'm not a local. You know, I have lived in Grand Haven three different times, you know, '84 to '89, when I worked at the Campbell Plant. I worked at the Cobb Plant right around 1999 to 2000. We actually purchased our home here in 2008 and moved in when I retired in 2012. So we knew from the first time we came into Grand Haven in, you know, 1984, we made some great friends, enjoyed the area, and we always knew that we would come back. So I'd like a chance to give back to the place that has given me and my family so much. So I think I could do a great job for you, but of course, that's your choice. And also, if you, you know, choose someone else, which is fine, I'm willing to, you know, provide any skills or any contacts I have to the board in general or whoever you may see fit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Do you have any questions for us?
Probably not. I don't want to interfere with your process, because I know you've got certain questions. So, you know, if, if there is something I haven't covered, you know, I apologize. I took a whole bunch of notes, because I wasn't sure how you were going to run yours. So I just, you know, I'll just let it go at that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil, for coming and interviewing and stepping up and being willing to serve. We appreciate that. We appreciate your answers to our questions. We will, we have two more interviews to do. Later, later this evening, we will probably take our first stab at making a selection. So whether we choose somewhere tonight, or it depends on how this group feels about the candidates, but we'll proceed from here. But thank you very much for coming in.
You know where I live?
Yes. We have your address.
Take care. Thank you for your time as well.
Thank you. Next one is at 6:40?
6 o'clock.
Looks like 6:40 to me.
I know.
Okay, 6 now. So we can, we can recess for a bit. Our next one is interior.
Welcome back from recess.
Welcome back from our recess, everyone.
Yeah.
Great. That's good. Welcome, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is everybody, you're recording now?
Yes.
So we're ready?
Yep.
Okay, good. Welcome, and thank you for taking the time to talk to us today and interview for the Board of Light and Power vacancy. I'd like to give a brief outline of what we're doing today. This is it?
You okay?
What's that?
Mic's fine, okay.
Yeah.
Want to pull it closer or you can go ahead?
Yeah, feel free to have the microphone closed, because your voice doesn't carry any better than mine, and mine doesn't carry at all.
I try and make it.
Plus, we're, plus we're recording this, so it's better for the recording. So this panel interview, each candidate is going to be asked the same set of questions by city council. We'll be provided three to five minutes to respond to each question. There will be a limited follow-up question, so that we maintain the integrity of the interview process for all being interviewed. You'll be provided an opportunity within the last question to provide any additional information you feel will help us make our decision. Ready?
Ready.
Okay. We're going to start with Karen, and we're going to go around the table here.
Welcome, Andy.
Thank you.
Please share, share with us a brief summary of your background and experience, making sure to highlight for city council, any education, qualifications, or other boards, commissions, and committee experience that you believe makes you uniquely qualified for the open seat on the Board of Light and Power.
Try and be brief. I am newcomer to Grand Haven. I've only been here since the year 2000. I came from Chicago. My educational background is a bachelor's in zoology from the University of California, master of science in population ecology from the University of Illinois, Chicago. As to board experience, since I've been in Grand Haven, I was on the Coast Guard Festival Board for 13 years, three years as president. I was on the Main Street Promotions Committee for 11 years, eight years as chair. I was on the musical theme committee for 12 years, till I got busted for being one term over, seven years as chair to as vice chair. So I have a history of volunteering in the town, for the town, for the businesses. I have run for Board of Light and Power trustee twice, lost twice, but oh, well. So I've followed the Board of Light and Power since the closure of Sims was starting to be discussed. And that would have been 2014, maybe, roughly that time. I attended most of the BLP meetings from that discussion onward. I attended all of the community forums on Harbor Island, what to do with it, what to do with the contamination, the sometimes contentious, who's going to decide what to do for the island between city council and the Board of Light and Power Board. There's now one manager in the process. Still no resolution of what to do with the island, because we don't know that he's standing on the nation. Studying the BLP functioning, I spent actually quite a bit of time with Dave Walters, who his personality came through, but he was very helpful. I've interacted a lot with the staff of BLP. As a potential barrier of lines, and it turned out AT&amp;T was the problem there, they wanted $100,000 per block to vary the cables on the poles. I'm also a solar array owner, so I'm a 10,000 kilowatt person on my roof, but familiar with the billing mechanisms with BLP for how much credit I get for the generation that I do and when I don't, I get a regular bill. And a lot of people object to the $20 connection fee, but when your utility is a distribution-only utility, they have to recover their infrastructure costs somehow. So that seems like a justified fee, even if people don't like it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. What are some of the most important lessons that you have learned from your prior experience on the boards and the teams, committees, and et cetera that you've been on?
One glaring takeaway is a persistent not invented here syndrome, that we don't seem to want to take lessons from other municipalities, other utilities, for how they've addressed particular issues, whether that's generation, contamination, power sharing. That said, this community is probably the most giving that I've ever encountered, starting all the way back with the sinking of the Esconada and the town raising the money to build a new one in a matter of months in the middle of a war. The board block with Ken Formesmith, and we're redoing it again, the extension of the pier, and we're doing that again. The reconstruction of the catwalks, Imagination Station, where I interacted with Derek Ados as the team captain of the volunteer force, and revelled in the soup kitchen from Paisley Peak. The town gets its act together and gets stuff done. And that, so whatever contention there is, whatever not invented here there is, we still get stuff done. And that would be my biggest takeaway, that people are approachable if the issue and the resolutions seem reasonable, they get behind it.
Thank you. Randy? What do you see as the most pressing issues facing the energy and public utilities industries today? And please explain why.
First off, I would say there are multiple issues together. So clean energy as a kind, what is it? Is it only natural gas? Is it only solar? Is it only wind? Is nuclear part of that? And I'm convinced with that are the plans by most public utilities, at least, to retire their coal generation as fast as they can. That puts an awful lot of strain on the grid. It puts a lot of strain on demand management, whether you try and manage demand by rate. Example, with consumers having now an off-peak rate, or I believe it's 10 p.m. on until 6 a.m., their power is cheaper. So if you have an electric vehicle, that's the time to recharge. That said, if you look at the reaction to clean energy projects in Michigan, especially the legal wrangling over siting of wind farms, and jurisdictions saying, "Not in our backyard," collectively, "Well, if I can't put it in your backyard and I can't put it in the lake like someone wanted to, where can I put it?" Or are you saying, "We don't want it at all, but if you're retiring coal generation in favor of something else, then something else has to go somewhere." So, and you don't retire every blueberry field in the state to put up wind farms or solar farms. But there are options that can be creatively addressed. Example, some of the commercial projects locally with solar on commercial buildings that are flat anyway. So you don't worry about the orientation of the building relative to the source, either wind or solar, you put it on building and orient it accordingly. So lots of different things in play. People have looked at hydro power from Michigan, consumers is decommissioning all their dams. I believe they have 16. If you wanted to buy a dam, you can, but then you have to maintain. So there, there's a problem. And the Grand River was just too slow to drop hydro into the river at four knots.
That wouldn't work.
Though other places like Rotterdam and the Netherlands have done it. They've licensed, or they harness tidal power that's moving at 12 and 15 knots to harness hydro where they could. So lots of different things in play. Another plague in the utility locally is erosion of the rate base. So as demand is managed carefully, you're still not in control of something like a business bankruptcy. When Grand Haven Molding went out of business and BLP lost its third largest customer, they couldn't plan for that, but now they have a hole in their demand. What are they going to do now? How are they going to, can they replace the demand? Probably not easily. Can they still buy power for the price that they've been buying it if their demand is low? There are lots of different whipsaws on the utility, trying to maintain itself and maintain reliability, affordability, and durability. Lots of different issues.
Thank you. All right. Just have an extension on that question. But what do you see are the challenges facing Grand Haven's Board of Light and Power? And how will your appointment make a positive contribution to addressing any of those challenges? Can I read it again while I think?
No.
Okay.
I'm trying to formulate my hierarchy. So the elephants in the room, as I see them, first and foremost is the fruit board challenge to having snowmelt rates collected in their electric rates and saying, "No, we don't want to pay for a snowmelt. It's not ours. We'd like our money back." Fruit board is first. Any of the service area jurisdictions that are outside the city presumably could meet the same demand that you've collected for something that we don't use, whether we use it or not. But collectively, they don't use it. So that'll place financial strain on BLP. The second is Harbor Island and the remediation of the contamination that's on the island, which we are still, through sampling, discovering what's the extent of the problem. And the BLP bond issue, a certain amount, I believe it was 15 to 18 million, was set aside for remediation. Will that be enough? We don't know until we know more about the extent of the contamination. Those two elephants aside, a third issue is the relationship between BLP, its board, and city council. a third issue is the relationship between BLP, its board, and the city council, which has been at times contentious. Part of that, I believe, was personalities. But I think if council and BLP board can meet regularly, the issues of personality can be overcome and the issues of finance, governance, how many legal councils we have, all of that can be ironed out through meeting regularly face-to-face. That said, I know all of you. I know most of the members of BLP board. Oddly enough, I've worked quite closely with Mike Westbrook, not on BLP issues, but on Coast Guard Festival, kids' parade issues, since we told him point-blank after, I think it was four years in a row, of taking the trophy that, no, Shane couldn't have a trophy again. Somebody else needed to win. So again, and then in dealing with the staff, Rob and I have dealt, again, on distribution issues, on tree issues, on how to connect solar, how would we rebuild? How all that would work? So I think I've got a working relationship with most of the staff at BLP, as well as their board, as well as you. And since I'm retired, I've got time. Because I've followed it, I've got the passion. And because I don't like fights, I think I could be a peacemaker. If you give me a chance.
Thank you.
Andy, but please share with us why you believe you are the best candidate to fill the BLP trustee seat.
Not knowing the other candidate's identity, all I can suggest is, based on my last response, I know all the people, they know me. And the interaction between the BLP and its customer base. Another glaring issue is the non-city resident ratepayer base. They're about a third of the revenue of BLP, but they're not represented either on the BLP board or within the city council. And yet they're carrying a third of the utility. How do they get representation? Where is their voice? Either on the BLP board or the city council? It's rough, but the BLP board would probably be the place. And there are precedents for it in BLP functioning. For example, there is a quasi-official rate committee of the commercial ratepayers. They are interviewed regularly, they meet regularly with BLP board and management on the issues about rates, reliability, et cetera. Why couldn't there be an equivalent committee like that for the non-city ratepayer? So I think, again, thinking out of the box, thinking about a distribution-only utility, how do we approach all these things? All these issues that BLP is facing? And part of it, if we look at MFPA, there are other utilities, municipally owned ones, facing similar issues to ours. They're not big enough to generate on their own. Like Marshall had a big plan for a generating facility, looked at the bonding financing and said, "There's no way. We can't do this. We shouldn't do it." So through MFPA, can we approach other utilities and say, "How are you handling things like this?" You could look at other municipalities dealing with heavy pollution, brownfield sites, like Muskegon with Sappy, with Portage with the paper mill, same issue there. What did they do? How do they address the issues of contamination? Do you cap it? Do you put a seawall around it? Do you dig it all up? Like Wookiee in Illinois had PCVs in their harbor from John's cowboy. They eventually dug it all up. I mean, so there can't be one panacea to a whole range, whole host of issues. But if you're willing to do research, look at other jurisdictions and say, "Somebody's probably had a similar issue, similar problem. What did they do?" And I'm a research guy. Oh, I got my start.
Thank you.
One last question. Do you have any questions for us?
Looking at the process of Harbor Island and looking at the three proposed current community forum proposals for the island, they all seem to ignore the east end of the island, which is as contaminated in some cases as the part that had J.B. Sims. Isn't it a whole island? Shouldn't we be looking at it as a whole? Or do we want to not get into the issue of the oil storage tanks that used to be at Third Street? I guess the soccer fields were an answer to some of the lumber mill contamination and some of the coal combustion from residential uses, which is how the island got as big as it did. So it, will it be a whole-island approach? Or is it going to be a west-island approach to Harbor Island?
We don't know that for a fact right now until we get done doing the research on it. You know, we have to make sure we can take care of the PFAS and everything else that's there first. Before, that's a long-term thing down the road that we'll be looking at. I don't know if we'll be around by the time that gets, it's a long time, it's a long process for us.
Watching Muskegon with the Sappy site, people up there were anxious that once the Sappy buildings were gone, then that land would develop overnight. And that was eight years ago. And there, I mean, there, there's been ground broken with a shovel, but it was a seam shovel, and it was digging away more of the building. So Harbor Island could be a 20- or 30-year process.
It'll take a long time. Right now, we don't know exactly what it's going to end up being, so that's just my opinion. I know, I know the history, I've been on there. My family's been part of the island at one time, so I know how it was formed, you know, with logging industry, how it all formed. It's, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of little things that are going on out there. So for us to answer, we don't know.
And you won't. How would you handle Fruitport's precedent if Grand Haven Township came to you and said, "We want our snowmelt money back"? Are you going to give it back?
Just to be clear, we don't have any snowmelt money. We did not collect any snowmelt money. That's not, the BLP did that and they have that money. And they, and it's up to them to return, you know, return it or not. That's not a city council's concern. That would be between the City of Fruitport and the BLP.
Or Fairiesburg. Or Grand Haven Township.
Yeah, going back to the Harbor Island holistic approach, I think that the enormity of the things that we must do by regulation, we have to get past that before we can talk about the things we'd like to do. So one thing at a time, I guess. It's nice to look at it and plan that way. But in terms of how we're going to deal with it, we're going to have a lot on our hands.
So even after the 4th and 6th of coal residual is taken off the same site, there's still more stuff down there. And BLP is, if I understand the discussion, saying, "That's not our coal residual." And there was a city dump and other stuff that's not ours. What will the city do with that?
Well, we'll find out because when the administrative consent order comes down, that'll be our priority. And then there'll be, the options will become severely limited.
Right. Unknown, so others act.
Kind of like every hurricane blowing.
Well, yeah. I mean, if the lake level comes back up and some of Harbor Island ends up in the Big Lake, it could be less of a problem.
All right. I wouldn't describe it that way, but thank you. Anything else?
None for me.
Okay, well, that was the end of our questions for you. So that's the end of our interview. We are interviewing four people tonight, and these are the only four candidates that we have. And so later this evening, we'll, we'll begin our process of deliberation and voting. And we'll see if we can select someone yet tonight. If not, then we'll have to go from there. But the intent is to begin our deliberation process and do our voting at, at the conclusion of the fourth interview. So that's where we're at.
That's where we are. Thanks for giving me the time.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Andy.
Let me use back to it. Thank you.
My paper got a little.
Okay, everybody ready?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, Jim is here. Welcome, Jim. Thank you for your time. I got a spiel I've got to read, so bear with me. We would like to thank you for taking the time to talk to us today and interview for the open member seat on the Board of Light and Power. I'd like to give you an outline of what's going to happen today. This is a panel interview. Each candidate is going to be asked the same set of questions by city council. Will be provided three to five minutes to respond to each question. There will be limited follow-up questions so that we may maintain the integrity of the interview process for all being interviewed. You will be provided an opportunity in the last question to provide any additional information you feel will help us make our decision. Clear?
Clear.
Okay, well, then we have a set of six questions to ask. We're going to take turns asking them. We'll start with Karen.
Jim, to start us off, could you share with us a brief summary of your background and experience making sure to highlight for city council any education qualifications or other boards, commission, and committee experience that you believe makes you uniquely qualified for the open seat on the BLP?
Sure. Let me start with the most recent. Currently, I serve on the Sustainability Energy Commission of Grand Haven. I'm also on the citizen advisory group for Harbor Island. And I have been on the, I was on the master planning board for the citizens. Then, I guess, moving backwards, in the springtime, I think I have some unique qualifications. I do run a professional solar software design program. And since I had that, I decided to apply for the Grand Valley Metro Council chair made a part of their program for the EPA was around the pollution reduction grants. So as you know, I, I'm a big proponent of community solar. So I put together a project for Harbor Island, one that I've been talking around the city for about three years now. And it was accepted by the Grand Valley Metro Council chair made. I got submitted to the EPA on March 1st. And, well, actually, it was, it was selected for one of the submissions by the, in the four county area, and it was submitted to the EPA. Unfortunately, there was a second phase that needed quite a bit of engineering, which one person couldn't do, so it, it didn't get implemented. My educational background, I have graduated from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor and with a Bachelor of Science in Chemical Engineering. I went on to work for UOP, which became Honeywell UOP, was one of their divisions. I worked extensively throughout the world on power projects, did design work, this power as far as refining petrochemical. And then I also spent time looking at future uses of natural gas, both petrochemicals, wellhead, et cetera. So I have quite an extensive background in energy. Let's see, I think that's, if there's anything else anybody wants, there's questions on, let me know.
Thank you, and we do have your resume, and everyone here, of course, has read through it. Thank you.
What are some of the most important lessons that you learned from your prior experience on the boards, teams, and committees that you were on? Anything on that order?
Well, I think probably one of the biggest lessons is that there's a huge diversity of opinions within all boards and commissions. And you've got to work with everybody, do your best, do the best to present your case and, you know, convince people that it should be adopted.
Jim, what do you, what do you see as the most pressing issues facing the energy and public utilities industries today? And please explain why.
Well, I think one of the biggest challenges is that we're trying to go through an energy transition from fossil fuels to renewables extremely quickly. And I think some, some companies are doing it much better than others. The BLP, I believe, is doing it excellently. They're, they have a diverse power supply, which you need when there's periods of change. You don't want to jump into one type of power, such as renewables. And we know Tri-Ver-City maybe jumped a little too quickly on that. So that's one. The, another problem that's being faced is the lack of transmission projects. So even though we have a lot of things going on in the, in the U.S., a lot of that energy cannot be brought up into Zone 7, which is Michigan. So there's a huge backlog of transmission projects that need to be built. And there's also a huge backlog of interconnect projects, projects that are out there that the companies can't get through the, you know, the regulatory system. They, they can't get them approved fast enough. And the other problem with renewables is with our tariff situation and so forth with China, it's, it's a difficult situation for companies to build them as economically as possible. And we're just slowly, very slowly ramping up with the IRA-funded projects for solar modules and batteries. So I think that's also a big challenge everybody's facing, along with the fact that so many of our products now are produced overseas, such as our large transformers. And I think everybody here has heard, we've had two-year delays for transformers. And when you're building projects, it's difficult to build quickly when you can't get all the materials on site.
Thank you. So what do you see are the challenges facing Grand Haven's Board of Light and Power? And how will your appointment make a positive contribution to addressing any of those challenges?
Well, I think the, the challenges that are being faced are, in my mind, reliability, which I think is being handled extremely well, affordability, which is being handled very well. affordability, which is being handled very well. From an environmental perspective, uh Michigan's uh climate, uh climate uh mandates, I think uh they're also being handled extremely well, we're at twenty-five percent now on renewables in Grand Haven, the average Michigan, or the the percent for Michigan is eleven percent. That's a June twenty twenty-four data. So, they're doing that extremely well, I think uh that needs to continue, I think one of the challenges, though, is the fact that we don't have any long-term goals that are published in a program that's published, where are we going? We know we're at twenty-five percent today, we're gonna be at twenty-eight percent in twenty twenty-five. But what about twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-four, you know, twenty-forty? I think a challenge that they face, and we face as a city, is to map that out. You know, have, have the long-term planning session, our, our private companies in Michigan have to produce uh uh planning uh program that's uh sent to the state, and it's a twenty-year program, and it describes what their plans are. It's the, I believe, the IRP. And I think we should have something like that in, in Grand Haven, I, I, I'll, you know, propose to do that. And uh hopefully, it, it can be done. And of course, uh, another problem, or another a big challenge uh for the BLP is, and the city is around Harbor Island, how are we gonna uh what are we gonna do and how are we gonna, you know, clean up the island and how are we gonna pay for it? And I think the way it's uh progressing right now is good, it's going very slow, but probably that's too there, there's, that's better than going too fast. Especially in the financial uh situation that we're in as a city. Uh, working slow and steady is a lot of advantages. And I think, you know, we need to just keep uh progressing what we're doing right now. And, you know, work, work through the issues as they come up. I think some of, you know, uh, some of the ideas for Harbor Island are uh great, you know, I, I like the idea of having a a little bit of community solar out there, uh, developing the, the land so that everybody can use it, you know, I'm, I'm very much against putting any kind of commercial or uh private-public partnership, I think, out there. I'd really like to see the island uh be used for uh nature and energy. And I think it, it can be shared very well for both.
Thank you.
Jim, as you know, we have uh four very qualified uh candidates interviewing today. Please share with us why you believe you are the best candidate to fill the BLP trustee seat.
I think I have a, a great vision of, of how to progress energy within the city, how to make it more equitable for uh all, all the citizens of Grand, citizens of Grand Haven, and that's through uh community solar. I'd also like to uh move forward with some of the programs that Holland demonstrated, such as the uh on-bill type of invoicing for various improvements, whether they be for conserving energy in uh households or for doing solar or electrification projects. Uh, I think there's a, uh, already a great start on electrification with the rebates and so forth that are going on now. But I think it, you know, by having some on-bill type of program going on, it could open that up to more people within the city who uh don't, aren't as economically advantaged as the group here.
Thank you. Oh, okay, no, please.
Yeah, and I, I, I think, you know, my, my background in the, I've been working on uh solar projects around the city as far as design, conceptual designs for many years now, three years or so, and I've probably developed over two hundred sites. There's, there's a lot of potential out there, just like on the uh BPW building that I, I did a presentation on, and I think I can bring forward uh potential projects and also help maybe close the gap between uh city council and the B, uh BLP in moving some of those projects forward. I know it's very difficult now to move things forward, but I think there's, there is potential, and I think I can help uh move, move them ahead.
Thank you.
And the final question is, do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, no, I, I'm familiar with the how, how the interview process goes, I've done it several times now, so on this and other uh, you know, commissions and boards, uh no questions.
Very good, thank you.
Well, thank you, Jim, you are, you are our final interview, and so um that concludes this part of our process, I appreciate your coming in and your candor on all your questions and your thoughtfulness and all that, your willingness to step up. And so, at this point, we are going to uh we've decided to begin our deliberations this evening and see if we can come to a consensus on to who we'd like to appoint. And so I guess that's our next step. But thank, thank you very much for participating.
Thank you, Jim.
We think ten minutes.
Yes, let's do that. I think that, I mean, I like the idea you take.
At least.
Yeah.
I just programming decisions.
Under other circumstances, I would take it.
We're taking a break.
Welcome back. So we are now on our first ballot.
There you go, first ballot, there we go.
This will be a rankings ballot.
Same thing, top two.
Yeah, let's see, let's see.
I like to know the rank, was continued to discuss the top two.
I think that focuses us better.
Okay, your top two candidates are Jim Hagan and Phil Poliak.
Are they equal or are they just the top two?
They're just the top two.
Well, I was discussed. Who wants to kick it off? Well, head reasons for voting, probably do.
Uh, uh, I'm happy to kick things off, um, uh, those were my top two, in fact, I had a hard time uh ranking one before the other, I thought they were both. Uh, all four candidates were clearly qualified, but um the deep expertise of both of those individuals from uh qualifications and experience, I felt would be helpful to the, the board, I thought both were um good communicators. Um, I, I particularly liked the fact that both of those individuals had uh vision and knowledge of policy, um, and seemed to have, you know, uh I, I think of uh Phil Poliak had perhaps the deepest understanding and knowledge of the industry and his experience, but I feel uh Jim brings a, his passion and dedication and as well as his experience globally as a chemical engineer um with his value of engineering, so I had them both up there, I think I could live with either. Um, one if, you know, the others felt strongly about one of the other candidate.
Well, thank you. No, I uh actually, I did have both of them as my, my top two, but um if I'm making a choice, you know, I, I definitely would support Jim. Um, only because of his his commitment to the community, uh, nothing against Phil, but he hasn't, I don't think he's served in a public capacity like Phil has. You know, I mean, Jim has been on everything, and uh I don't know what, what Phil has, except for the American Legion, I'm not sure what he's served. So I think, you know, if, I think if anybody deserves a shot for the next thirteen months, I think it's, thank you, Jim.
Um, I, those, I think, sounds like it's a deja vu thing, you're, I've had a, close to my top two picks also. We've all known, Jim, you've been here many times talking to us, and you've been involved in different things. And this is the first time I actually got to hear Phil, and I was pretty impressed on his vision and how to move forward and what we should be looking at, i- i- what he knows, he knows the industry very, very well. I mean, you can listen to him, I mean, he has a vision and he knows what the problem is and what we have to look forward to. I can support either one, but I push more toward Phil because of some effect of his expertise. And I think that we're bringing another voice to the board, something different that they don't have, I mean, he's been in the industry, he, I mean, if you listen to how he, he's just, I was just so impressed on how he gave his interview and how in-depth it was, it is nothing wrong with Jim, I like Jim too, I said, but the two whichever we come up with, I could vote for either one, but I really pushed toward Phil myself because of his expertise.
I had uh I had Phil and I had Andy as my other of the top two choices. Mainly because of Andy's deep involvement in the community and his understanding of various facets of the community, he wasn't focused just on the electric one industry, but on a financial bigger picture. So, I mean, that was my nod to Andy, but of these two, I could go with either, I like Phil's understanding of where the industry is, where it has to go and how it works. I think that's part of the oversight function of the BLP board. I like Jim's interest in doing innovative things in the community. I have a feeling that um Phil would be more of a team player type, and Jim would be more of a push to do what he, push to do what his vision type is, so I guess in that respect, I kinda lean toward Phil, but I would vote for either.
Add to it, yeah, Phil also was in the military, knows how to follow orders too, which is another thing.
He tends to sort of teach following.
Yeah, no, but still, they, they know how to take command pretty good, you know, submarines.
And, and I guess this applies to both of them, so I don't know if this, this has helped or not, but when we think about the role of a BLP trustee, it is to sort of set that vision and strategic direction and set the policy, it's not to do, be the doer. Um, and that's for the BLP general manager and, and team to execute. Um, and it's also to provide appropriate fiscal oversight on behalf of the people, you know, people, so um, I think those are important things to consider as we, you know, try to deliberate on these two.
I agree a hundred percent, and if you listen to interviews, Phil did give us the oversight that he knows how to handle budgets, he knows how to move forward, being in the, in charge of a, a plant, couple of plants and stuff on that order, he knows what to do, how to do it. I just, he's got a lot of, he's got a lot of positive things there, nothing wrong, Jim is very smart and very good. So. Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really see the need to do repeated ballots, although she has them in her hand.
Okay, we'll do a ballot.
We, we can either do another ballot or we can accept a motion, because I think we've discussed things, what would be the pleasure of council? I might wanna make a motion.
I make a motion to uh appoint Phil Poliak as a BLP, as a new BLP board member.
Well, second motion.
We have a motion by Fred Second by Lowell. Go point Phil Poliak. Questions on the motion? Please call the roll.
Chris?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
McGawson?
Yes.
Menace?
Yes. We're done.
Oh, yeah. Good job, you guys.
From a procedural point of view, what else do you need from us?
That's it, um, BLP typically likes to do their swear-ins at their meetings.
Absolutely.
So I'll probably be at their next meeting to swear, uh, fill in, and we can uh contact him, let him know what he was chosen.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds good.
And again, I'd like to reiterate, whoever's listening, that we had four excellent candidates. We gave them all due consideration, they all had attributes, and we made our best choices, who we thought was the best fit. And that's all.
Very good.
I'll smoke my coffee. Or not. And I would declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.